We'll have to have this for our meeting with the MBCA. The regular Apple City Council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM September 3rd will now come to order.
Council Rowsey.
Here.
Council Koyvonen.
Here.
Council Lilis.
Here.
Council Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Visalovic.
Here.
Approval of the minutes, City Council Workshop Meeting, August 6th. Approval of minutes, City Council Meeting, August 6th. And approval of the minutes, City Council Workshop, August 14th. Anybody have any changes or questions? If not, they'll call for a motion that we approve these minutes?
Motion.
Motion made by Rowsey, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hadrava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda. Under new business, we have two items to add. Item 11 will be the hiring of EMTs. And item 12 will be 2:00 AM liquor license approval for the penalty box. That'll be number 12. Anybody else have any questions or additions or deletions? If not, approve tonight's agenda with these changes?
We'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Koyvonen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Under appointments and presentations, we have reappointment of George Walters to the EDA Board of Commissioners. Call for a motion that we reappoint George?
So moved with a great deal of thanks for his service. He does a wonderful job for us.
Glad he signed up for another tour.
I will second that with also an act of gratitude towards his expertise. I enjoy working with George.
He's been here a long time with us and we appreciate him.
Yeah, good job for us. Motion made by Lilis, support by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We've got kind of a little ceremony here for the young gentleman. Ian Hutkowski, and we got a letter here sent by our district representative who is recognizing Ian's service in helping fund local governments by getting our local government aid, by appearing at the hearings and stating his opinion, which voice carries a long way when you're there in person. And it's nice to see the future of the area having a voice like that. And Ian, we've got an award for you for doing all that hard work. Going on to St. Paul, going to Coalition of Minnesota Cities. Well, you can get it right on TV where everybody can see it. Want to present this to you on behalf of Coalition of Minnesota Cities, City of Evlin, and all members of that coalition. It really means something, you know, when you do that stuff. You might not think so, but a voice is a voice. It goes a long way when you're there instead of a letter. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ian. Good job.
Do you want to speak? Go ahead.
Mayor, take a picture.
Take a picture, Tim's taking your picture.
Good job, you know.
Yeah, Ian, please step at you.
Not yours.
That's yours.
Yeah. And don't clean fish on it.
Bye, Ian.
See ya.
Ah, that was good. Nice to do something fun.
Yeah, a reward. I like that.
Yeah.
Fun enough for those around.
You gotta get the interest and you know, you get... That's their future. They're taking it in.
That's the future of the nation right there.
Yep. That's good, taking an interest in it. We got our visitors' presentation. If anybody would like to address the city council. We got Eric Westburg, West Eblin Civic League. Is he here tonight? Hey, we have a microphone there, Jackie?
Craig.
Here it comes.
Gentlemen have the floor there.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name's Eric Westburg. I am the president of the Westside Civic League as of a week and a half ago.
I'm Jeff Delancey, vice president of the Westside Civic League.
And we wanted to come and speak with all of you, you kind of know what we have going on out there in West Eblin. I'm not from West Eblin, but my wife is and had heard about all the great things that the Westside Civic League was doing when she was growing up and it's kind of come and gone, I want to understand over the last 40 years or so. And we had kind of up and going about 10 years ago and it kind of fell off again. And now we have lots of young kids, young families out in West Eblin, Leona, this area. And we decided to throw our hat in the ring, I guess you could say, and get it off the ground again because we want to build that up and really it's all for the kids and the families out there. And along with that, there's a few projects we have in mind that we're starting to work on right now that we'd like to kind of keep all of you informed on. The first of which is if you've driven out in West Eblin lately is there's no more hockey boards. Those have come down, I think those were 27 to 30 years old, I'm thinking. I think I was like 12 or 13 when those were first put up. And since we took over the Westside Civic League, we had $2,000 in our account. And to rebuild this, we started the kiddie going here with donating $1,000. The city of Leona just donated $2,000. And our initial quote from the hockey lumber was $6,300. And now they have actually gave us quite a big discount and come down to about $5,000 for these boards. And back 27 years ago, it cost $10,000 to build that thing. And we're looking at about five grand, you know, just for the lumber. And then we got, we're working with SEPIs, they're going to be donating some, you know, giving us a break on the concrete and stuff. And we were just hoping that to see if the city would be willing to match what us in Leona just have done and that would put us right at where we need to be. And then anyone else who donates, we can probably, you know, get new lights which are needed and all of that.
Well, I don't see a problem jumping in and helping you guys out, but like the new lights?
No, see, we're...
When you guys are there, you should kind of have a plan so every year when we work, address the lights too, since eventually they're going to have to be done.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I don't think, whatever...
Our main thing right now is the boards.
Yep.
Because they were a hazard. I mean, we weren't even going to flood it again this year unless we put up new. Because they were connected to the shack by wire and stuff holding them up. And we took that wire off and we pushed them. It was getting the address for the kids. And that rig is heavily used every winter. And it's just time to put something on new for them. And I must say, Mr. Zawedon's been helping us out as well.
Leveling the land for us. And that's going to save the city's water bill. I'll tell you what, we're going to flood that thing in a week now rather than three weeks. So it's going to save about two weeks of wasted water. Because if it was so like this, it took us that much longer to do it.
Yeah, all the extra man hours though you gotta put for the extra flooding too. You gotta find some volunteers.
Yep.
I think, I think that's the least we could do is try to help them out because they're putting a lot of time in themselves.
That's right.
I mean, they don't want to see it go by the wayside. And since we were kids, it's always been going out there. And that was probably the last time we had new boards.
Yep, it was. I was, I think I was 12 or 13.
Gentlemen, let me tell you where I'm coming from. Born and raised in West Eblin. Hold it very dear to my heart. That rink was one of the major focal points of every kid's life out there. I learned to duck and swear at that rink.
In the same sentence.
In the same sentence.
Yes.
Same breath.
In the same breath. We're using a sponge pack.
I do believe that we should support this project in any way, shape, or form as we can. Plus get that ball field.
We got that.
I see that. I go out there twice a day, fella. As I got no life.
Well, that was our first...
Twice a day, and I've been watching the improvements and it's nice. And it's going good and I really, really want to throw my weight behind your efforts to get some funding.
Well, I grew up on Spruce Hill like you, John, and lived at that rink down there.
Yep.
You said learn to duck, I understand that word.
We used to play ball on that ball field out there with your father.
Yep.
You know, he was a...
And eventually we're looking to get back that little summer carnival they had along with the baseball tournament at the same time, you know, like it used to be when I was growing up.
He used to bet the dollar on number 11 and spin up.
I'm all about saving money, Jeff, so... Eric, I think we find something to do here.
What's the shack like out there, Jerry? Does that need something too? I believe that was remodeled four years ago, was it?
Yeah.
They redid the inside?
The siding was a little iffy in a couple spots, but we're, we're gonna, we're eventually going to have fundraisers and stuff. We just took this over and we needed to get them boards done, so that's kind of why we haven't had the time for that kind of stuff. But these boards are the main thing right now, just so we can be up and going here.
I don't have the same point of view as the other councilors do, but I certainly can attest that there's certainly a need out there, national laid out. You know, there's just a wealth of young kids out there and it's just wonderful to see. And thank you guys for stepping up to the plate, getting reinstating the Civic League and taking an interest and spurring an interest. I really appreciate that.
That was around when I was a kid. You know what I mean, there was pretty active out there too.
Was there even a West Eblin back then?
They delivered a lot of groceries out there.
My too, with that big plug. All these fingers right on.
It's a good thing you learned how to duck.
What do you guys, have you branched out that project though?
Yep.
One question.
I hate to have you come back and run into something that costs more.
Eventually we're going to need paint and everything because we want to paint both sides of this thing.
I think once you get started out with this and then you have a couple fundraisers.
Yep.
I mean, people will donate very well to it.
I agree.
You know, just enough so you get a little kiddie and get rolling with this.
I hate to see you start then you don't have enough. So if we commit five grand to you and I'd help you guys out?
Perfect.
You know that's, you know you got that?
We appreciate that.
Very much. Smiling really.
Everybody else agree with that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. You had other projects in mind also, Eric?
Well, the boards are first and foremost. And you know, a little bit of work on at some point the baseball field, fences, and you know, future playground equipment, that's down to go a little bit, but...
When I was growing up, just through an idea, there was a big honking slide off the back of that shack. Boy, that was fun. It was like a ski. So keep that in mind in future planning.
We're just trying to keep our kids out of trouble.
That's a good place.
You have a nice place to go, they're going to stay out of trouble.
That's what it's all about. You know, you talk about these other projects we're talking about, but you can't forget the kids. You know what I mean?
That's our future.
There's so many out there now that...
It's nice to see that.
This is a good time to get this civic league rolling again and provide them the opportunities that, right, Jeff was a lot of, he was a kid, looking forward to it.
Yeah, if you guys come up with like a three-year plan, we should be doing this and this in three years, you know, it can go in conjunction with everything else we do. Especially the playgrounds, because we don't have a lot of nice ones anymore. You got the North Side Park, Park Out There.
Well, the city of Leona just is totally on board with whatever we're up to too. Very supportive. They're very supportive.
Yeah, they always have been.
Do we need a motion, Mayor?
Uh, I don't know. You want to lock us in or just...
Well, we can lock us in if you want. I mean, I suppose that might be the...
Make a motion, okay.
Five thousand.
So move.
Support. There you have it. There's your five grand.
Thank you, guys.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for putting in your time.
Thank you.
And if you need something, just keep the communication lines open.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate your time, your advice, and support.
You can see the black Ford going through with the little minions in the windows, that's me. I'll, I'll talk with you, you know, I'm not twice a day I go through there. Leona just won the looks. No problem. Excellent. Good.
Anything else we can help you with?
No, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys for doing this.
Oh yeah, and by the way, the check's in the mail.
When it dries up, we'll be able to...
Okay, yeah, we got already half of the frame built already. All the supports, we're going to build the rest on Thursday. And we'll get ready to go once that's, you know, for the end game, so that we know it's dry, or it needs to be dry.
It's a little swampy out there.
All right.
Well, gentlemen, thanks for telling me.
Bye, guys.
Item G, consent agenda. Approval of payroll 16 through the 31st of July. Approval of payroll 1st through the 15th of August. And approval of August claims for 2019. Anybody have any questions? Now call for a motion that we approve the claims or approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion made by Rowsey, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. No public hearings, no unfinished business. Item J1. Amendment number three to joint cooperation between St. Louis County and the City of Evlin, CDBG grant program. Anybody have any questions? If not, approve this item or disagreement. So move. Motion made by Koyvonen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number two, request from Laurentian Chamber of Commerce to participate in the broadband feasibility study. How many of them studies have gone on?
They got a study there.
I thought they just put it down fail road here the other year, last year.
I was just going to ask you guys, didn't they just without our, because they came to us at one time and we said, no, we're not interested. And they more or less said they're going to do it anyway. And they have put it out there on fail.
On the highway, better, yeah.
So what are they going to, we're going to spend another $5,000 to figure out that they're going to do it anyway? Doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, every time you read anything in the legislature or the paper, there's something going on.
It's going to happen anyway. I mean, it's just...
Well, this broadband might be to get the, maybe out to the new school out there?
Hmm, I think they're already wired because of Progress Park.
Yeah. Yeah, you got the call center there, they'd have to be.
I guess they would be, yes.
I guess I would agree that project is feasible.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we need to study it any further actually.
And what do we have to do on this, Jackie? You want something?
Well, take no action and I'm going to do some more research on this. Yep.
We'll just table that item. Item number three, purchase agreement between the City of Evlin and Brandy's Building Limited Liability Partnership.
We're ready to go.
We're ready to go. Anybody have any questions or anything? Got any comments, Jackie? Otherwise...
No, I think they're going to close within probably two weeks.
I have a question. Are you nervous, Brandy? I just had to do that. Well, congratulations because it's going to be a good thing.
It's a very needed service.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, no one else has any question? Call for a motion that we approve this purchase agreement?
Also move.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support?
All support.
Worked by Koyvonen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number four, resolution authorizing conveyance to real estate and authorizing grant
That authorizes the mayor and I to sign the deed and the grant as laid out in the purchase agreement.
Also move.
Motion made by Koyvonen, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number five, letter of support of Northeast Service Cooperation Grant Application. Looks like more broadband. Well, might as well give them a support they need.
Letter of support.
Yes.
Just nice.
Get through. Call for a motion? Agree with this letter of support? Motion made by Rowsey, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Change order number two. Final from Joel and Sop Escavating in amount of $7,437.80 for 2018 alley improvements.
This is your specialty.
Joel, that's your specialty.
You know, on mine it was a minus.
I see a minus.
Mine says a minus $7,000.
Is that a refund?
Is that a refund?
It's a deduct, we call it.
Well, then also move.
Yippee. Looks like the next item's going to take care of the...
The next item's knocked down to three.
Well, when I was reading it at home, I was giggling because I saw the minus, so I couldn't get excited. So yeah, I'll so move on that.
The glare on his glasses, I didn't see the minus on that minus. Any further discussion? We have a motion, Steph, and a second.
I second it.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Number seven, pay request number three final from Joel and Sop in the amount of $10,476.37.
We'll also move since we have an extra $7,000.
Any further discussion?
I'll support that.
Joel and Sop give it and Joel and Sop take it.
Comes and goes for us in this business. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, consider Veterans Park on Edel Lake Campground Managers Agreement for the years 2020 and 2022.
Well, the, they have done a great job for us out there. Our park looks nice, they seem to keep everything in order. I would say the park commission and all of us are behind this, so I would recommend that we support it.
How long has Pete's been there? He's got to have 10 years, isn't it?
That's longer than that.
13? Oh, yeah.
They started 2006.
Very.
Yeah, because I remember who we had in 2005 and 2004 and it's tough to get somebody in there that really wants to do it the way you want it done. You know, and I had my little pet peeves, but we've got that worked out, me and Jerry and I do, and so I think they do a good job. I'd hate to have to bring somebody else out there. So with that, I'll support Bradley.
You made the motion, Bradley?
Yes, sir.
Joe, you supported?
Yes.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Pay request number five from Classic Protective Coatings in amount of $135,850 for 2018 water tower improvement. Should be 2019, eh?
I would think so. Is this the end of it too?
This looks like it.
Does our water tower come with like a 40-year guarantee or anything?
It should last 25. The new coatings that they have now are a lot better than the original.
They didn't give you a case of Flex Seal or anything with that, did they?
They did not have one.
I suppose we can get a cheaper...
I'll tell you what, for the hot weather, those guys who are working inside that tank, oh, I don't know who you'd get to do it.
Well, it's done. It's another big project that we accomplished. We did West Eblin a few years ago for big money, and we did this one for big money. And I'll make the motion, we pay him, and thank...
Pay these guys?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Bradley the motion and John second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number 10. Park Commission recommendation to raise seasonal camping fees at Veterans Park on Edel Lake
These fees now, that was just seasonal, was it? It didn't affect the daily rate, did it, or the monthly? For the... No, it's seasonal.
Seasonal and storage, that's all.
And storage.
Yeah. So it's like common sense.
Well, we, you know, we like to look at everybody, all the campgrounds in the area and balance and not overcharge. So it's a very slow-moving process to raise. I'm always the guy, I'm not going to charge. We've got a full campsite, I'm very happy our campground is full, leave it alone. Keep raising it and we're not going to price the people right out of it. And I just, this way I think we have some increasing in costs. We have to cover a few things and this is a good idea. With that, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava to accept the new fee structure, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Lilis, any further discussion? You know, it's better to do this on a regular basis than wait too long and really jack it and have to jack it. Then it gets everybody, you know, upset. And this is still, this is still cheap compared to everybody else.
Very fair rate.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number 11. Teresa Alverm recommending the hiring of an EMT. Is that Alana?
Yes.
Alana's Lehman? Call for motion that we accept her recommendation?
So move. Big thank you for joining our staff.
Yes. Motion made by Lilis, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Koyvonen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number 12. Approval of 2:00 AM liquor license for the penalty box in Eblin? No one has any questions or call for a motion that we approve this request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Koyvonen, any further discussion?
Is that something that every bar has to apply for at 2:00?
Yeah.
If you want to stay open till 2:00.
Think back how long, last time you were up at 2:00.
I used to go in the 70s, not so much anymore.
Well, it didn't make any difference in the 70s.
No.[1609.25]
No, you didn't need a license back then. You just didn't.
It's like a wild western, that. And you never stepped on the pit anyways. Out there.
Do we have, we get a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. So some people won't go thirsty tonight.
Not at two anyway.
Anybody have any committee presentations or commission reports?
I got nothing.
John, you got anything?
I don't know. See, already we met, our library met and that was, you know, nice and everything. Well, I think I did report on it though. They're looking to use that room a little bit more downstairs and they're working on that and things are moving along. And they're writing the norm with all the other colleges. Then we had, uh, the, uh.
EDA.
That was yours. And, uh, do we have a HUD too, or HR?
HRE, we had a meeting.
And that, and that went quite well. Everything was up to snuff there too, as far as occupancy and repairs and all of that stuff. Uh, I think that's about it though.
I see, uh, it looks like the changing of the guard at Lincoln Place. Must get a lot of the long-term residents are gonna, you've got them coming in again.
Yep.
There's another report from the EDA, a little bit of a, not so great news, I guess, is regarding the, uh, Highway fifty-three project and the, uh, funding and, and the quotes came in a lot higher than were initially anticipated. So we're working on, uh, coming up with a plan to deal with that over long, a longer period of time. There's just no way that we could afford to, to do everything that we wanted to do all at one time. So we may have to, uh, spread this out over a period of years so we can, uh, get maximum utilization out of the, the grant that we might get from the state, so. So that's the bad news.
Like you said, it wasn't five dollars more either.
No.
You know, I had a little discussion with one of the Philtown Board members. I don't know if you wanna go along, maybe forming a joint economic development? Group with them, especially along this corridor we're talking, cause there's a lot of activity if the Mindot building goes there and with the school, cause they've got a bunch of property. So do we. And maybe, like you say, two heads are better than one, cause.
I don't think it would hurt one bit.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe have Jackie and, uh, meet to talk with Heidi out there? Because they seem pretty receptive about getting an agreement with us and we work together on improvements.
Oh, I think it'd be great. I was coming back from, uh, the cabin on Monday, yesterday. And, uh, my wife, I said, boy, that really looks nice where the, they pulled that bridge out. But then again, that first bridge still looks like crap.
I thought you were taking both of them out.
No, they're leaving that one up. But I mean, it needs to be painted. I don't know. I don't know who we have to arm wrestle to get this thing painted or fixed up, but we need to do something.
Just start firing letters off.
Because it's the gateway to the Iron Range and it looks like, you know what? I think we should do something.
Who owns the bridge, the railroad?
I would say the railroad.
Demon IR. I think it's Demon IR.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, um, I just had a conversation this past weekend with, um, one of the managers from Mindot. It's CN Railroad. Um, I, I've tried in the past to contact them. Um, he does have a contact. He's gonna be trying to get ahold of them, um, to put some type of face dressing on that bridge. So I'm, I'm hoping he will come through.
I just got a thing in the mail, a nice magazine, how they wanna be part of the communities that they go through.
Here's their chance.
Perfect. The ti, the timing's right there.
I'd like to see it look like, uh, Highway thirty-seven bridge. That'd really come out nice. And that blends with what we've done to Midway in Virginia and the rest of the bridges that they put in in the last few years.
They could put a nice, a nice sign up on that one side that says, you know, welcome to Eglith Gateway to the Iron Range.
Yes.
You know, I mean, that's right there.
That would work.
I don't think we would say no to it.
No, you say, well, if you did it for two communities, Eglith and Phil, that might be an easier push.
Yeah.
Well, you know what I mean?
Let's continue working with Phil.
Let's just see if we can work with Phil and then go at them that way.
Yeah, they, they seemed interested in exploring, uh, something like that.
Yep.
So we can work on some projects together for the property going up this corridor.
I think that's a great idea.
Sounds like a good plan aside on a bridge.
Yeah, cause, uh, kinda anxious to get this fire department thing moving along too and, uh, get that, get that done and get it moving, but that's, that's kind of about all I have. Anybody else?
Chief?
Brother?
Who you wanna go to? You wanna chief?
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, chief.
Got anything else to bring up? We're just.
I was just gonna say, um, just a quick note to the public that school is back in session today. Um, and we're just asking for people to be extra cautious around, uh, schools and following school buses, uh, to get their kids, uh, to and from school safely.
When's, uh, October first? What is that? When do they have to start marking on which side of the?
October first.
So, that's only like twenty-seven days away.
Sure.
Go, please. Let's not discuss that now.
It's coming.
You know, it sounds kind of early, but you know what started that? That Halloween snowstorm we had?
Yep.
Cause you know what a war zone a town looked like with cars all over the place, buried.
Oh, yes.
It's like Lamont's car race starts on my block. When a person moves over, everybody comes out their house. It's running to their cars, move over. And it's, I love you, neighbor, but screw you. And it's, uh, it's, it's something else.
Early bird gets the worm, you know what I mean?
Yes, it does.
Jerry, you got anything else?
I have nothing there.
Ellen?
Um, there's a pre-con, pre-construction meeting with Dawn and Top tomorrow for the Jackson Street project. So we'll find out more on the schedule and that, uh, after that meeting.
Oh, okay. Good. Hope they get it done. Starting to cool off out there.
Excuse what it was again? Waiting.
So Jackie, you have anything else?
I don't. Thank you.
Mitch?
No, Mayor.
I got one more thing, Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, I didn't, you know, jump in when I had a chance there. Uh, the park commission, uh, we, we look at all our parks. We look at everything that our children play with. West Eglith was on our hit list this year. We just took care of it. Thank you all for being part of that and helping West Eglith, uh, with their parks. Cause we, we do help them fix their, their equipment and their stuff out there all the time and, and that's a good thing for us to be doing. Uh, with that being said, we also been had Jerry and involved with the school with the Franklin rink. That's our other rink that, uh, it's on their property, but we've always maintained it and always took care of it. It needs serious, serious help. This year it is, uh, they cut it down a few years ago, took all the bad boards off, made a full board out of it. Uh, now the full board's a fellow bird and caved in. So the Franklin rink, the shack is ours, the rink is ours, but it sits on the school property up there at the Franklin. But that's, that's also just, there's fifty kids a night on that rink. And, uh, so we're, we need to look into doing something with that.
I, I really think that we should probably do something with it because the, the parents are willing to donate all their time to clean the rink, to, you know, flood the rink and, and all this and that. And that's one thing that we don't have to worry about. So I think we should do whatever we can because they even do all the work to the boards. So if we have to throw a few extra dollars towards them, I think we should.
Well, my thought was for the year, if we could, if Gary could, you know, go up there and look at it, maybe we could patch it up for the year and then make aggressive move next year to get maybe more boards on it or something next year.
Pretty bad shape.
Oh, it's bad.
Really bad.
So like Bradley said, there's lots of kids up there.
Will, will we have real boards now? Because to me a hockey rink has boards that come up to about where you can jam them into them, you know?
Well, I, I didn't know what was going on with that.
You know, it's like pushing them.
When we redo it next year, we'll probably, uh, put real boards back up there.
That's a hockey rink.
We still, I think we still gotta kinda talk to the school and make sure all, all the Ps and Qs are properly handled, so.
We're not stepping on their toes.
Right. And I think Jerry's had talked to Mr. Carey already?
Jackie.
Jackie has? Okay. And I don't think he really minds what we do as long as we do it.
That's kind of a good way to put it.
Well, he's, he's had, he's busy, you know, they're, they're combining schools and whatever else is going through there, they're, they're, they're busy. So as long as they say, hey, make a playground out of it, let's make a playground out of it.
Is that all you have now?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Steph, do you have anything else? Anyone from the audience have anything to say? Yes.
I'd like to say one more thing about the river and cancel, uh, bridge. Jackie does have a copy of one concept, a signage on that bridge and cancel it, so. If that could be pushed, we get Eglith's name out there. We are in the gateway to God's concrete, Northeast Minnesota. And I think that would be great, great plus. If you as a council can push that, that would be great. I would highly prefer it.
Well, I'd like to, we could go all, you know, we get, that, that bridge needs to be painted and fixed up. So if we can get them to hang the sign, I'm, I'm willing to do that there and push on it. But we could also do it down at Highway thirty-seven and put Eglith fail, the gateway to the Northland.
Yep.
On, uh, Highway thirty-seven bridge, because that is a Mindot bridge and that might be an easier sell than the railroad.
Might be a tougher sale, cause.
Yeah, I think it takes legislative action.
You know, cause going Mindot says they don't wanna be doing, I can understand their point. Every bridge in the state might want something and I, you know, I can see their point there.
Okay, okay.
Well, this is a railroad.
Railroad break guys, they do what they thought. Yes, okay.
Well, whatever, whatever needs to be done.
We'll work in it. Yes.
Because the amount of crap that I guess we can on this highway is tremendous. If we can get our name on that bridge, I don't care if you ask the legislature or where. We can get it done. Make that a cool. That would be great, great potential for me as well.
Well, that's kind of the game plan. I say, I just got that nice letter from them and a nice magazine of how they wanna be part of the communities. This is their chance.
You gotta give them a good shot at it.
Good to hear. Doesn't it? Got the door open.
Anybody else? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Longest meeting. At least I see a couple.
We kept them.
We got forty.
Hey, we're moving.
Forty minutes. This was like.
That's overtime.
This, this was, this was like my longest meeting.